...at 10:45 PM. And Steve is going to give us an update on progress to date.
I am. So while I'm pulling this up, you should have a packet of papers that was provided at the meeting on Thursday. There we go. So we've had two meetings. Our first meeting was on Thursday at North Central Junior High. About forty people there total, including administrators. And then we were at Liberty High School last night. And we had probably eighty-ish, Bill?
Yeah.
Eighty-ish. Yeah, so we brought double the crowd last night. Lot of first-time attenders at both meetings. Did a little informal, how many of you were here with us in 2015, 16? It was a fairly small number of hands that went up. Talked to quite a few of the people that were there. We had a lot of people who actually don't even have kids in our district yet. Four-year-olds, three-year-olds that were present with us on both evenings. They came back the second night, which I was pleased to see. And we walked through one main activity on that first Thursday, which was to help them understand what Appendix 5 is and what it does. It's up here. So we walked through what Appendix 5 is, what it does. Actually, let me back up just a second. We walked them through a little bit about what happened in 2013-14 and what happened in 2015-16. Then as a group, they sat down, they looked at the factors, the 21 factors. We had a big discussion on the fact that many of them are counter to each other, so if you pick one, you couldn't pick the other one. We then asked them to go through and tell us of those 21 factors, which ones, I'm gonna, where's the input? There we go. Which ones were most important to them? A little hard to see up here, but as you look at your list, you should have the Appendix 5 list in front of you. Number nine, keeping communities of students together, was the biggest one. If you remember back in 15-16, we spent a lot of time talking about neighborhoods and the importance of keeping neighborhoods intact. The second one that received the greatest response rate was minimizing student disruptions. From the conversation at the tables, it was, "I prefer not to have my kid go to multiple schools during either the time they're in elementary, or I don't want you to change my feeder, pattern, path as they move through the secondary schools." And then we had a couple of them at seven in their responses, address immediate, short-term, and long-term needs, and then minimizing transportation distances. You'll note on the free response section in the safety one, there was a lot of conversation about sidewalks. We did happen to have a North Liberty City Councilor with us, and I know the folks at his table talked to him at length about seeking sidewalks on some of the routes right now that don't have sidewalks in North Liberty, and where is the plan for that, and when is that gonna happen type of thing. And then there's a cluster of them that came in at six. If you look across your chart there, promoting safety, again, quite a few safety considerations about busy streets, considering projections for future growth, not allowing schools to become too big, and considering what geographic barriers are. We also talked to them a little bit about the 15-16 discussion about geographic barriers. What does that mean? It's not just mountain ranges. It's also roads and railroads. We used the example of the Longfellow Twain. Is Kirkwood the geographic factor, or is the railroad the geographic factor? So had some conversation with them about that. So what you have in front of you is their response rate to the 21 items, and then their free response rate below that is, we asked them the second round, was, "Tell us what that means to you in your neighborhood." And at your table, try to come up with at least five things that we should consider as we go through that process of drafting maps. So we know what your top ones are from the policy standpoint, but what does that mean at home? What does that mean to you when you're sending your kids off to school? So that's what the free response is. I almost spent a lot of time walking through that with you. You can see the categories that those fell out in, and I can come back to that if you'd like to discuss that further. Then, get to the right one here. What we did is we took that back and we looked at the attendance areas that are currently approved by the board for 2019-20. And you can see, we put the big maps up here that we ran off on the large-scale printer today to show what this looks like. So it's up on the screen, up on the wall. Maybe I'll turn around and refer this one on the wall over here. Based on the feedback, one of the things that we looked at was the current attendance areas as approved by the board for Garner, for Van Allen, for Wickham, and we left those intact. We did not touch those. So these are exactly the same boundary maps that were approved by the board after the 15-16 community engagement process. Did not touch those. Then what we did is we looked at, this is the location for the new Christine Grant Elementary School on Mahaffey Bridge Road, and we began to look at the population of students that were originally assigned to Scanlon Elementary School and the students that were assigned to Penn Elementary School. If you'll notice on the verbatim input that came from folks, one of the big issues that occurred, and it came up at quite a few of the tables when we talked about, was the parents who live in what was the North Liberty Attendance Area and what was the North Wickham Attendance Area said, "We understand you need to send us somewhere after you build this map. Where you send us is very important to us because we would prefer not to cross the feeder streams for the secondary schools." That is, please don't send us somewhere that's going to go to Northwest and West if indeed you are going to build the Scanlon Farms Elementary School and then put us back on the track that goes to North Central and Liberty. Because the Lincoln parents in particular said, "We know what that feels like." As I went from table to table, they said, "We've been through that. We've been at West, and we've been at City, and now you say we're going to Liberty, so pick a path for us and leave us on that path." So that was front and center when we were thinking about this process. So what we did was we built a geographically compact, again, go back to your factors, geographically compact attendance area for Grant Elementary School, and then we took the North Lincoln and the North Wickham and the remainder of the Penn students and fed them into Penn Elementary School. If you look at, and this will help you, I think, as you go through. If you look at a map, and I'm gonna pull the Grant map off. This comes out of our attendance software. Each one of those dots represents a household that sends kids to school. So if you look at this area, you know, you can see that essentially out here, as you get out towards the river and the reservoir, no development, right? So we've got a handful of scattered kids out here and out here. Most of our kids think Fox Run, think Cedar Springs, live in here. And then there's another group down here near Penn Meadows. So when you look at, and again, this was a crucial factor for us as we were doing the Thinking Ahead piece. Look at the Penn Attendance Area. Again, on here, you can see these students that are part of the current Penn Attendance Area, and then these are the students here that are part of the North Wickham Attendance Area, and then the kids here that are currently attending Lincoln Elementary School. We know, again, to orient you, here's Liberty High School, right where the cursor is. So we know that there's growth going on here. We know that there's some plodding growth over here when you think about the northwest side of the roundabout up there. And so, if I can go to the presentation, there we go. This was the slide deck that was shared with the crew last night. One of the things that we did was look at capacity numbers. Sorry for the quick scroll here. And one of the things that was a concern at many of the tables, remember, it was planned for immediate, short, and long term. And so you'll notice that there's about seventy-five seats available at Grant Elementary School. We know from talking to the folks at North Liberty, the municipality, that many of the areas on the north side of those suburbs are areas that they have not currently extended sewer and water, and they don't plan to in the near future. So we know that if there's growth going to happen out there, it's going to be sometime. So that gives us a little bit of space. We still have seventy-five empty seats there. Garner and Nick's here. One of the things that we talked about, Nick and I were looking at the number on here. We want to go back and look at this. We know we took this off the one chart, but we think this was before the addition. And so we've gotta go take a look at that and make sure that that number's correct. Nick thinks we might be missing a couple of classrooms where the kids, so we're just under the capacity there, but you may want to think of it closer to 575, but Nick is working with Dwayne on that to make sure. But again, if you look at Grant, we also know that, I'm sorry, if you look at Garner, we also know that relatively compact attendance area, you can see that most of the area's already developed. There's a small area out here that still might be open for growth. So there is some space left. Oops. There we go. There's some space left at Garner, not a substantial amount of space, but also not significant growth. Penn, on the other hand, has quite a bit of space available. And again, part of that was the conversation that was had at the table and then the follow-up in regard to potential areas for growth in and around Liberty High School. So that is a quick drive-by on our process. Phil was there. Sean was at one of them. Paul was at one of them. I'd certainly invite the three of you to chime in and high points that we might have missed that would help the rest of the board come up to speed.
Just one question with these drafts that you had. Do you have any idea on busing requirements?
Yeah, we didn't. That's a great question, Phil. We didn't run any transportation requirements. We knew, and this was another one that came up at one of the tables, the Liberty folks and the Wickham folks were already presumed to be bused in the previous Scanlon Farms Elementary School process, simply because we knew that the buildup wouldn't be there yet for walking paths. I don't know the implications for the Christine Grant. We did not run those.
Is there any idea that that would be available, oh, a timeline as far as when we might have any?
Probably when we get a little closer to the final part of the process. We have to pay Durham to do those transportation runs for us, and we prefer not to do them on every iteration. So we're hoping when we get a little bit closer to the end, then we can ask them to run that for us. We do know, and that was another issue that came up fairly frequently, when you look at the safety section, it talks a lot about walking. So you'll notice that there's a lot of very specific feedback from the parents that were present about which neighborhoods they would like to see go to Grant. Much of that table discussion was about the fact that their kids can walk to the school. And so they had said, "We want to make sure our kids go there because they can walk there." So you'll see that a lot for the Cedar Springs, Fox Run, some of those other surrounding subdivisions.
Well, and on the safety issue too, it's crossing a busy street.
Mm-hmm.
That was a...
There's a whole bunch of that on safety, and then you kind of also see it when you look at the boundaries, when they talk about the neighborhoods and the streets.
The table I was sitting at, at the first one before we had maps, just when we were kind of going through the different things that were important to us, I'm sitting with a gentleman I hadn't met before. He's kind of new to our district. I think City's been here only like, this is only his second year in the district, but he lives in a specific neighborhood that we then got an email about, which is just north of Penn Meadows Park there, that both he and the email talked about being able to walk like through the park down to Penn.
Right.
But in this scenario, they'd be going across Front/Mahaffey Bridge Road over to the new school, and you know, if you kind of look at Grant and Penn, they kind of sit on top of each other, right?
Yep.
I was just curious as to what the numbers would look like if it wasn't that straight line and it did a zigzag on front.
Yep, so if you look over here, if I kind of look at that cursor around, it's this piece right here. If I stand over here, it's the neighborhood right here. So it's this piece right here. We didn't run that scenario yet. I saw that input that came through.
There's just kind of little clusters on either side of Front, south of Penn, and a little cluster on either side of Front, north of Penn, and we draw a line this way. I'm just wondering if it did this.
And that came off...
I don't know the total numbers and the demographics and how that all would change. I'd be curious as to what that would do, and that would allow that group to not have to cross that street. I mean, they're really close to the new school, but they're also really close to Penn in that neighborhood, too.
Yeah. And I know when we were looking at it, essentially, part of the conversation is, okay, do you have cross, is it a north-south cross or an east-west cross? And so I think that that's part of the issue that we gotta look at as we move forward.
Being in the North Liberty Res, and I could tell you that the traffic going out Mahaffey Bridge Road between North Liberty and Solon has a lot more traffic on than Penn.
And faster.
But I don't know if, now that Penn's paved all the way down and around to Liberty, if that has a lot more traffic on than it ever used to.
That was a debate at one of the tables last night about what's going to happen in the future with traffic patterns, and that's obviously hard to predict.
And I think there's a lot of traffic places within the district itself already that we have to cross. I mean, we crossed Scott Boulevard, and there's twenty kids that cross Highway 6, so...
Definitely a scenario we can run, though.
I just, I mean, I'm looking at dots on a page and trying to guess how many dots are in this little pile and how many dots are in this little pile.
Yeah, remember those are households. How many of those households have more than one kid?
So I mean, it may dramatically change numbers. I don't really know. It's something to look at.
For the next session, the next community meeting was the 29th.
Yes, so we got input. We put draft on it. So it hasn't, we haven't categorized it at all. I mean, you see, I always alpha-sort these, so there's no prominence given into them. But this is all the raw input from last night. Thank you to Kim for keystroking it all in this afternoon in short notice. But that's all the raw input from last night. Last night's session, for those of you that were present in 15-16, last night's session was forty-five minutes, Lori.
It's gotta get longer.
Lori, you said some of the marathon ones.
Pick up speed as they, it's like a speedball.
Yeah. It went pretty quick. Feedback was good at the tables. They were coming to some fairly quick consensus on some of the things I liked and didn't like about it. You'll see that in the pros and cons. We use this as an iterative process. So again, you look at the agenda, we talked to them to understand what they wanted, and we drew a map, took the map out to them, they gave us some feedback. Maps here for you for feedback. We have a session scheduled tomorrow. Amy and Adam and I will sit down and take a crack at another round of maps. We take both Round 1 and Round 2 back to the community next Monday night, so they get a chance to take a look at it, bring it back to you. And so we'll go through that process. Last time around, it took us, I don't know, we were on like double letters or something when we were drawing maps. I don't think we'll go that far this time because we don't have as much complexity with it, but the idea is hopefully within three or four iterations, we get something that the largest number of the people that are present at the meeting have some level of comfort with. We shared with them that one of the reasons that we come back and forth to you at the work session is we don't want to spend a lot of time working on the map, all of a sudden it shows up in front of you, and you guys say, "Eh, absolutely not." So this gives us that opportunity to take your input, their input, and try to keep drawing maps to get closer and closer to what hopefully is the final decision.
Will you pull back up the page that had all the schools together and what their capacity and...
Let's see, I saw that. Oops. Nope, sorry. There we go. And you have this deck, so that should be in your handouts. This is all posted on tonight's board docs, and then it's also on a page that, it lives on the facility master page, master plan page, but it's also linked directly to each of the elementary schools, so parents can punch out right through it. They don't have to dig around for it. One of the things that was asked last night was, "Hey, thanks very much for this data, but just for comparison's sake, can you help us understand what this data looks like for Van Allen and Wickham?" We're probably also gonna run it for Corville Central, just kind of do this north-to-eighty thing so that people can see it. One of the big questions that folks had, Christie and I talked about this at length, is, "Where do the kids go now?" So I'll use Grant for you. So if you look at Grant Elementary School, this tells you that right now, there are 552 kids that live in the Grant Attendance Area. Of those, 179 are 10 Borlaug, so think your Cedar Springs, Fox Run kids. 355 are Penn kids. And we got 10 Van Allen kids, and then we've got several schools that have less than five. Borlaug, Lucas, Schimmick, Wickham. Why is Wickham on there twice? And, it's gotta be a typo somewhere. But those are kids that are voluntarily transferred to somewhere else. So in some cases, you'll see some ELL kids in there, and remember, one of the things that's our goal for next year is to have ELL programming in every school. So there may be a handful of kids that may be ELL students that are voluntarily transferred out of one of those schools. But most of them are voluntarily transferred, parent choice, may have moved in from another attendance area. So those who are there, Amy, Sean, Paul, Phil, what else do we need to tell them? Those that weren't there, what else can we answer for you?
I'll just kind of ask the question because it's been asked of us multiple times, particularly the handful of folks in that North Lincoln. I've said that it made perfect sense for them to go to Grant when it was, you know, a lot closer to them. It didn't make sense for them to go to Grant, which I appreciate that's not how it is. But it does make total sense for them to go to Liberty because it's right there. So I see how keeping that feeder in place works nicely there, but you're sending them up to Penn, and I know that a lot of them had voiced to us, "All right, what year do we get a move, right?"
That was a big question last night.
There's no space for them next year, right?
That was a question that came up last night, and the question was, and this has always been the question, is, "When you find a home for us, can we apply for voluntary transfer into that school?" So there were quite a few parents that were North Lincoln parents last night that said, "Hey, I know I'm zoned to go out here next year during the renovations. Is it possible for me to apply for a voluntary transfer to go to Penn for that year? So that if I'm going to go there in 1920 anyway, can I go there in 1819?" So that, one of their questions was that, but then their bigger question, at least at one table, was, "And if you don't decide to send me to Penn, and you pick Garner or Van Allen to send me to instead, can I apply to go there because that's one less transition for my students?" So we need to tell them that that voluntary transfer process is already always open. Christie tell you Penn's pretty full right now.
As I said, there's no room for, I don't know how many kids that is.
There are 107 kids total that live, and you can see it right there. There are 107 Lincoln kids that right now are zoned to go somewhere. So one of the things that I told the parents was, "I understand, A, their desire, and B, their concern about space at Penn." I said, "If, let's not get the cart before the horse. Let's see what decision the board makes, and then we'll look at what alternatives might be available to us for that following year."
There's not room for, I'm gonna say more kids at Penn next year.
Not right now there aren't.
Maybe seven.
As I said to Amy, I don't know. We gotta figure out how to get creative. Christie was worried about my creativity last night. So I guess what we need from you now is what directions do you have for us? What input do you have from us so when we sit down tomorrow and start moving lines around? What things, besides the input that we got from the folks last night, would you like us to think about? Are we gonna take a look at Penn?
That's the only one that stands out to me. I mean, crossing 965 is not a great thing for anybody, but you got all of those kids on the west side of 965, right, are going to Garner. You gotta cross it to get to any of them.
Yep.
So that's a part, and that's a lot of kids, but so that's kind of grabby, but that little bit there, not having to cross Front Street, depending on how that balances the numbers.
We definitely know where the map is.
The number of Wickham kids is relatively small.
It is, yep. And again...
And we've received some emails.
Got fifty-four kids there.
Well, fifty-four to Penn, twenty-four to Garner. I guess I'd have to see which ones are going where. Is there twenty-four?
See, I gotta go back and look. I know this line is right, and I'm not sure what I got going on down here. There's some kind of cut paste error, isn't there? So I gotta figure that out.
Yeah, because it seems like it's just one little area there. I don't think they could be...
Yeah. I think it's fifty, I think it's fifty-four, but I gotta go back and look.
Okay. All right, so...
Steve, we probably have twenty-four Garner students at Wickham, so I wonder if that's, since we don't have some of the same programming, so that might be a point of clarification check out. Because Garner doesn't have ELL or some of the modded up program.
We'll get that cleaned up.
That's probably it.
That's probably about the number.
Yeah, it would make sense to...
Just an FYI, and Adam's not here, so I do have to give him a big shout-out. So we had that meeting on Thursday. We came back, met with him on Friday and said, "Hey, here's what they told us. Let's sit down Friday afternoon and draw up some lines on the map. Now I need final product from you, including all these numbers." And so he did all this work on Sunday for me and sent it to me. So we will sit down tomorrow, make sure we get those numbers cleaned up.
So we've received some emails from some of the North Wickham people that have said that they're not crazy about changing schools.
Yeah.
Frequently, because in their case, it's not even as bad as North Lincoln, but they would potentially be going to Scanlon when that's built, so...
And that's one of the things that they had asked about, was could we do one of those maps that shows this stuff for Wickham, too? And they were pretty direct with me to say, "If there's room for the fifty-four of us, could we just stay?"
At Wickham.
At Wickham. So that was their question. Now, there was a couple, there was a little dissent at that table because the one mom said, "Now wait a minute, that's alternate path. It's a Wickham path, not a Liberty High path. What does that mean for our kids? And what if we get zoned, what if you build Scanlon Farms Elementary School? Because we know you assign kids to high schools based on their elementary school attendance zone. Are you gonna make us cross paths again at that point in time?" I said, "I don't know what it will look like by the time your kids get to be that age." So that's something we'll have to take into consideration. But that opportunity might be there. We might, if you remember, at one point in time, we were drawing some flex areas. You could go here, you could go there. That might be an opportunity to look at, too. So we'll get those numbers, this chart filled out for Wickham, too, so that you can take a look at that the next time we get together, and we can have the parents look at it, too.
Yeah, because one of the cons is listed here is that the Forest Gate neighborhood is within walking distance, so adding a whole bus...
Visual distance, they'll tell you.
Yeah, for adding a whole bus route, it's forty grand.
Yep.
For kids that maybe don't really want to move twice.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, parents. Kids are, they're much smaller.
And that's, I tell you what, when we come back then, when we go back to the parents, we will draw, we'll pull those numbers out, and we'll look at them going both ways, and flex. I think we can do all three of those.
What else?
I'd like to thank Lori and forward me an email that came in from a parent. If you get an email from a parent that has something in it that you think is going to impact us as we go through putting that information together in maps, if you could please forward that to me so that I can make sure that those comments are included in our thought process, that would be awesome. As she said to me in the email, "I hope you don't get seven forwards." I take seven forwards versus zero, so that's okay. Don't worry about that. You can forward it seven times, that's perfectly fine. I could process those. I'd rather do that than miss one of those comments.
Yeah, nice work. This looks good.
So far so good? Yeah.
To start, we got great input. We've had good dialogue, we had great turnout.
It's good.
So it was, I was optimistic. Anita's back there, she got her hand up. Would you like to say something? Please do.
I feel like I need to put in a plug for, I know we're talking significantly north of Kirkwood, but Kirkwood is sitting at 75% poverty, and if we don't start looking at some of the other neighborhoods around us, we're going to remain at 75% poverty, and is that what we want?
I think that's part of the second point we're getting to, and I might touch on that here a little bit.
And I did share with the parents at both meetings, I walked them through, there's a slide in there that shows the process, and we did talk about the next steps, or the board really wants to look at some big-picture issues, and that even if we do come up with a resolution for these two attendance areas, so that you have some level of certainty of knowing what's next, that if, in the term I use, was if we unzip the whole package and start looking at all twenty elementary areas, that doesn't mean that because we had this conversation, that this is not part of that next phase of the discussion. So I was pretty clear with them at both of those meetings, that they understood. This gives us place, so that we've got that holder in there, but we may be looking at other alternatives moving forward, and you're part of the family, and you'll be part of that family discussion.
So maybe, Steve, it might be helpful, because Kirkwood, you know, is kind of close to this, you know, we might be peeling off some of these neighborhoods we're talking about. Could we kind of have an idea of what some of those neighborhoods might be, and just kind of start that discussion as we're moving forward so we can...
We'll run, we'll run that map, too. And maybe I'll just kind of come down here and pull this map so we can see all of them and include that in the packets in the slides for the next pair of presentation, too.
Yeah, that'd be great, just so people have their heads around like what that means. Like, oh, you, this might change. Well, what does it mean? And I think we'll get more conversation rolling.
Absolutely.
Is that a good segue to the next item?
It's an ideal segue to the next item. It's an ideal segue to the next item.
Yeah, and I, I was wondering, since you're sidewaving Anita, do you wanna say a little more?
Can, can I just ask, maybe if we bring the principals to the table instead of the-
Well, I invited them all, but they chose to sit there.
I think it's weird, 'cause we don't usually interact with the audience during this.
Yeah, I, I invited them, but they, they all-
She did, she wanted to sit there.
That's great.
So the next topic's kinda yours, so I'll turn that over to, to you guys to start the conversation.
Who wants to jump in?
I'll go, just, you know, because, you know, you did bring up that, the topic, and I think we've discussed in a couple of work sessions that we really need to, um, I don't know, start really thinking outside the box of how you wanna do stuff, you know, we can do so much with boundaries, we can do so much with programming, um, and then you start looking a little bit, you know, beyond that, when you start to look at, you know, sister schools, or magnet schools, or anything like that, that is gonna directly affect all those things, and I kinda brought it up at the, at the board table, that that's something we really need to be deliberate about, and I, and as we were getting our update from the Equity Committee, when they had their whole calendar all scheduled out of how they wanna attack things, like, that's forcing them and then us to be deliberate, and I think that's really what we need to do is to be more deliberate at how we're gonna attack these things. And, you know, we recognize the need to develop the, the boundary around Grant as a sort of immediate need, because, you know, the boundary that takes place in a year and a half, that, that's no gift. Uh, so that kinda jumped to the top as a thing, um, but we didn't want to have that just sort of in a vacuum all by itself, um, so we have started the conversation, and I think that's where we kinda stall out, is that, okay, what, what do you do, do next? You know, what can we do? And I think that's where we really need to kinda have those timelines put in place, and what, all we wanna accomplish, and, and really have a structure as to how we wanna try and address some of the, the balance, you know, Dick, he talks about it a lot, uh, you know, balance header elementary schools, and the class size stuff is a, is a big thing as well, so definitely having the conversations, but I, I think my struggle personally is, alright, we talked about it, what do we do? And, and I don't know, and so I think this is the opportunity for a guy that has way more experience in, you know, what works in schools than I do, to give us some thoughts on it, I would welcome that.
So a few years back, um, we had talked about the RAM being a short-term, um, solution, a mid-range solution being looking at boundaries, re, um, you know, reconfiguring the boundaries, and a long-term solution being working with municipalities, so that when we create new attendance areas, those are already diverse, and, and so I think we at some point have to really go after that long-range piece with our municipalities and say, if, if we build school here, we want varied, um, housing, we want mixed neighborhoods, we don't want all of one group of people and then have to bus everybody back and forth. We want diversity, if that's truly what we want, that's what I believe we want.
You know, I'm with you, Anita, I do too, the, and I think that conversation's happening. I, I can't say I'm optimistic, uh, I mean, so Corvale's done a little tiny bit of that, Iowa City has done a little, and then it's lauded as this amazing thing that nobody's ever done before, but it's microscopic. I mean, it's not gonna touch num- numbers like this, to do, uh, you know, some of the housing maybe can be kind of affordable, but you can buy it out, you know, I mean, there's, it's very convoluted, because what I'm finding out is municipalities can try to do some of that, but developers really, at the end of the day, are who develops property, and it's, so I just don't, I think we have to keep pushing that, and I think, you know, I think that's been our sentiment, not just this board, but many boards going back. And I think we probably have some pretty good momentum in a lot of our municipalities that are on board with this, and then my sense is, what they find out is, and then you get elected, and then you talk to the developers, and they're the ones who are gonna build the thing, and they, and so there, it's just, I think it's, I think it'll be hard for us to bank on that making any impact outside of twenty or thirty years.
So that's really good to know, so then if that's not a viable solution, then I think we do have to be talking about, do we do, I think there are many options that are, um, educationally sound, it's what will this community get behind? We can do sister schools, we can do year-round school, we can do lot, you know, um, what else did I talk about?
Magnets.
Magnet school, we can do any of those things if the community believes in it, and if the community wants to support.
I think we went through that magnet, whole magnet, uh, school exploratory process, and sent people off to Maryland, Massachusetts. Studied the schools, and then when we came back, we passed out the survey, would you send your kid to a magnet school? And the overwhelming answer was no, so that kinda, you know, there's no drive for it.
What kind of magnet, I mean, did you say, like, so, I ran a survey, was it, so I, for example, any, this is completely anecdotal, but anytime I talk to anyone almost about a year-round school, they're like, sign me up, and that staff, and, so if, so what I wondered was a survey, like, did you give people options? Like, this is what a year-round school looks like, that could be a consideration, this is what a foreign language immersion looks like, that could be something that we could offer.
Was it a generic survey?
There were some options for them, and, and the, the big one that we found was, uh, there's a high level of correlation between I like my neighborhood school, and everyone likes their neighborhood school. Kirkwood kids and their parents like their neighborhood school, the Twain kids and parents, the Lincoln kids and parents, and so we asked them, what's your, what's your, uh, opinion of your school? Super high, so by and large, across the district, the parents love the school that's in their neighborhood. And then, so then what we found was, there's a high correlation between I like my neighborhood school, and I would pass on a magnet school if it wasn't in my neighborhood, um, and it's just because they like, they like going to Kirkwood, they like going to Twain, they feel like they're home there, and, and they, if the option was to leave my home school, I don't know if I wanna do that. Which, it, it's a good problem to have, but it's also a bit of a challenge too.
Well, and that's the thing about a mag, I think anything we have to do, like a magnet, we'd have to pilot some, some ideas, right, and see if it works, 'cause if it doesn't work, we're not gonna marry ourselves to something that, that's not working. The other thing that we could do, you know, and this goes to the article that Steve sent out, with boundaries is just gerrymandering, you know, but that, and I guarantee you, people are gonna, but the thing is, everybody says they like the balance, but when it comes down to, okay, now we're talking about your school, no, no, now I don't like it, and we are gonna run into that, and I think at some point, as a board-
Yeah.
Well, of course, yeah, we're, that will, and it will be, there will be hundreds of people at those meetings, and they'll be very angry, and they'll be, but it's not fair, that, that's why we, that, this is a fight, this is a civil rights fight, it is, and nobody in the status quo wants to be upset, nobody wants, 'cause it's really good at their school, um, but the truth is, uh, you know, I was sitting at Taekwondo today, and I was talking to a lady who's like, oh, we just moved here, and my husband's a doctor, and, and we, tell me about the schools, and I'm like, hell.
Did you tell her you're a board member?
Uh, not at first. I was like, let me fill this out a little bit, and she's like, we just, we can't go to Central, just, we looked it up online, the test board, we have to go to Wickham, and I said, I said, you know, you, you, you need to, and I told her, I said, you need to go talk to the principal, just go meet them and talk to people. But that's one person who happened to have a conversation with a board member at a Taekwondo meet, but there's hundreds of people who, all they do is look up Zillow and look at that score, and that's it. And that drives them to make purchasing decisions, and it exacerbates the problem. And the one thing, this board, we have the power just to say, it's not that way. Like, I don't care what you do in North Liberty, we get to draw the boundaries for these schools. And then that's, the problem is, with the board, I think, is that we, you know, we're such a young board, and we're al- it's always been a young board so recently, so there's no threat of like, not getting reelected.
But reelection power comes into your decision-making.
But, it does come in my decision-making, I don't care, frankly, but that's the community's check on the board's power, is elections. It just doesn't feel like a check on the board's power, because we don't ever get, recently, very few people run for reelection, so there's no, it's kinda like you can do whatever you want and move on, and that's, I mean, that's unfortunate, you know, but that, the community, so what the community will accept is what the board they elect will do. Because tech, we're doing lots of good community input, we don't have to do any of that. We could just draw boundaries and deal with the political fallout, I don't think we should do that. But I, but when you look at communities that have balanced these things, it's gerrymandered. I mean, these boundaries are very specifically drawn to include certain neighborhoods and change things around, and I think without doing that, we can prob- we're gonna picket the margins, but we're not gonna hit those, we're not gonna hit Alexander, we're not gonna hit Kirkwood, not in a way that can shift twenty points, I don't think. I mean, I, you know, as creative as we can get, the fact is, our community is very segregated economically.
And remember, your, your, your best chance to do that is actually at Kirkwood, because of the adjacency of the other elementary attendance areas. Your most challenging place to do that is gonna be when you look at the Hills, Alexander, Wood, Twain, Lucas, because there isn't that physical proximity. That was, went back in fifteen, sixteen, when we went through it, that was the quandary. That's why we got into double digits on those maps, because we kept trying to slice up those attendance areas on the southeast side, and we just struggled with setting up attendance areas that had some level of geographic, I can't remember what a Tuette called it, but, you know, she wanted them to be really geographically tight boxes kinda thing, and to try to set it up like that, and try to get demographic balance, I mean, it was just an exercise in futility. I mean, the poor community members there, kept cocking them up, and we'd draw new maps, and we'd bring them back, and it was the same numbers with different attendance areas, so that's the real struggle. Kirkwood, we do some gerrymandered attendance areas, you see, you know, we could, we could start working on that.
So maybe, you know, a conversation where we can, can we draw boundaries that are, you know, aren't gonna look as boxy? And then where we need to, and I think, and I know that's the feedback that came back on magnets, but I wonder if we have more specific, like, would you leave your neighborhood school to have a year-round attendance? Or a full, uh, language immersion, or what?
Fine arts was one of the big ones.
Be very obvious that people would make that choice.
We did a, I can't remember if it was thought exchange or what we did, but we did something where we asked a specific question about year-round schools. It was at the beginning of my term in twenty fifteen.
That was the one that got the highest response rate of all, I mean, fine arts, STEM, language immersion, there were like five or six of them.
There was a lot of interest in it.
Yeah, but year-round got the, the greatest support. They did want us to have year-round junior high and high school too. Um, that became one of the follow-up issues with them, well, wait a minute, my elementary kids are on year-round, but my junior high kids are on school year calendar, so.
Which, you know, we're not gonna convert the whole district to year-round, I mean, we haven't even had, we haven't even had air conditioning yet, so, but even if we did, I mean, I, I think that's an unrealistic plan to just do it all, like, in one big fell swoop, um, but what we could do is do it somewhere, could start with something.
And we, um, we talked today, she came in to volunteer to that Kirkwood, and so we talked about those, um, those in-between times, those interim, those intercessions, kids could be offered STEM opportunities, and so you take away the problem of the junior high student not being home to take care of the elementary kid, because you still got the elementary kids going, and, you know, we wanted to do that.
And that was one of the things, when we were looking at that last time, we had a big conversation about what does year-round mean? Is it simply a hundred and seventy-five different days of school? Then that winds up being cost-neutral for the district? Or is it a hundred and seventy-five days of school plus intercession in summer, which then winds up being a significant cost add to the district? So that, that's another thing that you gotta balance when you look at it. All your magnet schools, you remember, wait, the committee, the, the, I can't remember the name of that woman from the National Magnet School thing, you know, she talked about, there's a sunk cost when you start, because whether it's foreign language immersion, or whatever it is, you're gonna have those kinda startup costs that are associated with it, so that, I think that's part of the mix that we've gotta think about too.
Well, and, I mean, I pay for summer program for my daughter, so, you know, I'm paying for something, whether I'm paying for it in, you know, three-week times throughout the year, or I'm paying for it two months at a time. I mean, you know, not, not, for, for not everybody is that gonna be a free thing that they, they get during that break. But for some people, there might be, actually, but then I wonder if there's some funding for that.
Or if there's some community partners.
Or some community partners, um, you know, like, would Rockwell Collins be in, or something? I don't know, I, I think it requires thinking outside the box and saying, okay, we know these are the barriers, but let's figure out how we're gonna overcome it, if it's something we want to do, which is the first.
And, and money's gonna pay, play a big factor in that, 'cause if we can't afford to do it, we can't just make decisions and then hopefully can pay for it.
Well, we make choices, we make choices, I mean, in Davenport right now, um, at, at the DPO, let's see, Sean was there, um, that, they do a fine arts academy, and they have decreasing enrollment in their district, and they get a hundred and five, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per student less than, they're caught in that bubble. I don't know if you know about that funding bubble that's been in place since law school was started, but, um, anyway, their superintendent spends twenty-five percent of his time fundraising, and he gets, and, and I, don't, there's no hidden message there, just saying that he spends, he goes to John Deere, where else did he say? I can't remember where all that-
John Deere was the one that he, you know, is like two to three million a year, uh, from John Deere, and, uh, they also have a vocational, a high school, and I asked him after the, the meeting, I said, well, what happens if a, if a student, uh, their junior or senior year decides, well, I'm at the finance, and I wanna go the other route? He says, no, you don't understand, we still have vocational at all, but we have the one that specializes in and has the advanced curriculum, so, um, I was very impressed with what was happening in Davenport, and the fact that they were facing shrinking.
And he was very open, he talked about the budget cuts and that, all the things they were looking at cutting, so it's not like, I mean, he totally is like, yeah.
There was a laundry list that made me physically sick, 'cause he listed twenty things off the bat that they would have to cut to try and make ends be, because they are a shrinking district, and, I mean, it-
I know, he said their, what their fine arts academy runs a two and a half million dollar deficit a year, I think is what he said, so they got a fund raise for it.
And I think he said that that's all funded though.
Right, but it runs, the, the district runs a two and a half million dollar deficit, and then they have to go out and find two and a half million dollars to pay for the fine arts academy.
Yeah, what if the next year John Deere's like, man, sorry?
What's that?
I said, what if the next year John Deere's like, sorry?
Well, let's ask Dr. Tate that question, 'cause I, I didn't ask that, I, I don't know.
I just know, at a way, way, way smaller scale in my real-life job, I deal with donation asks every day, you know, and if, if we didn't give something to something, it wasn't gonna happen, you know, and then they count on that every year. And if one year I was just like, you know what, this year I'm gonna give that money to this program, and then everything is done.
Yeah, I don't know what he's got in place for that, but I, I imagine they'd have gone into a whole magnet academy, without having a contingency plan for funding, but I, I didn't ask that question, so.
Well, yeah, it is all about choices, and what you're gonna spend your money on, you talk about gerrymandering districts to try and create balance, I mean, you could totally do that, then you're talking about significant transportation costs that you would incur, right?
Potentially.
We don't have money for that, and, you know, there's always-
Unless you start just in this area, or you can do it with Kirkwood, and with, um, I assume that's the neighboring, without a lot of transportation costs.
Yeah, I think where we can, we should do that, and, and then I also think where we compare schools, um, I mean, you, you can get some financial efficiency doing that, uh, programming efficiency doing that, and then the FRL balance is just what we're looking for, and I think we, we probably have some areas that where we could do that, and we could, um, pair those attend, 'cause then you're kinda double your attendance zone, and you can maybe do more within that, um.
I think that's another piece, I mean, we talked about that a lot, and that's something I would really wanna get community input on, because as much as some people don't want to move their kids from one school to another to have kids in multiple schools at the same time, maybe is stressful, and something that may not work as well.
It's definitely something to think about.
I'm playing out, it's the devil's advocate, there is rock.
Think about how stressful it is for those kids in the seventy-five percent for reduce, and that's every day, all the time.
What I'm saying is, I'm just saying, they, they can go there, 'cause they can get there, and that's a school that they can be at.
Right.
And I can pick my, all my kids up at the same time, where they can all walk home together in the same school.
The truth is, we have to, if we're gonna change the status quo, we have to change some things that people are comfortable with right now, and I think what, where I'm coming from, and what I ran on, and I never have shied away from this one moment, is I'm advocating for the people who are getting the shaft right now, who don't have the equitable experience, that's my priority, as a board member, as a candidate, um, because other folks have it fine, well, for, for the folks that ha- who have it fine, for the folks who don't have it fine, to come up, something has to give up here, I mean, something has to, right?
You know that, I-
And that, and, and the reason I emphasize this, and the reason I think we can do it, is because we do agree. Despite what some people might think, I don't wanna mess with my comfort zone, I feel that we have a board that says, I'm sorry about your comfort zone, but all these people who've never had a comfort zone deserve, and we're not even saying deserve a comfort zone, they deserve an equitable education as your kid over here, because, just because you can afford a half a million dollar house, doesn't mean you get a better education, and that we're, we've, as a board, I haven't heard any dissension saying, yeah, that's not the priority, and I know, well, this is what happened last time in two thousand and nine even, And I know what, this is what happened last time in 2009 even, exact same discussion, but as soon as we looked at the maps, the first thing to go was equity, right away, like, oh, we just can't do that. And I just, I'm not, and I could be wrong and in a few years people may hate what I do, I'll get all the terrible email and all, but I can't in good conscience, you know, I've watched that happen and people just, and a big, very diverse group of people as far as mayors and realtors and developers and teachers and all kinds of folks, but man, as soon as it, we started, as soon as we got to people's discomfort, forget it, it's gone. And I'm just not, I'm not comfortable going down that route again despite the political fallout. Cause I, I agree, we're gonna run into that stuff. And, and we had, and then I think we have to problem solve. So, and that's why I think it's, would be terrible to just say, gerrymander, whole district, boom. Because it's not gonna work everywhere, but I think if we do, if we can find our spots where we have opportunities like gerrymander, you know, maybe see if there's a year-round magnet and, and do a more specific series, see if we can get some traction because we need people to move there. And then the thing that comes up, if a lot of people wanna go to a magnet, we don't wanna displace people in the neighborhood, so, so that's tricky. And transportation is, is huge. So I, you know, I think all of this is, is outside the box thinking that we're trying, you know, this is the first conversation about this that we're really trying to dig in and say, we, we feel like we have a board that's willing to make some big dramatic changes. What could those changes look like?
And so maybe Steve, I don't know if this is what we're kinda getting at, but maybe the, we need from the admin, when we would need some decisions maybe? Cause I think there's some, aside from the grant and Garner areas, you know, there's some immediate things that we could probably do in the next year or two at Twain, Alexander, Let Me Man, you know, to address some of those issues. It's like, when would you need to have, you know what I'm saying? We have like big picture dreams and we have some things that could happen right now if we wanted to do it?
Yeah. Now, my answer is that's kind of a moving target because if the question is, what do Amy and myself, what do our building principals, what does the transportation department need? We need to know in April. We need to know in March.
For what year?
For next fall. I mean, we gotta move teachers around, we move teachers around, we gotta move bus routes around, we gotta move bus routes around. We can do that. I mean, you know, we just stop doing these things, do that thing, get it done. I can tell you that the last time around when we sat at the 2015-16 thing, we had the parents say, if you wanna change my attendance zone, then I want you to tell me this March for a year from this fall, cause I need time to process this. Now, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I'm telling you that was our feedback, was give us a year, cause we need time to plan. So, so it's not as much what we need logistically, cause we can turn pretty quickly. I mean, we've got reassignment rates inside the contract, Durham runs our, our bus routes for us, I was telling Phil earlier, we just gotta write them the check, they'll run the routes, they got all the addresses mapped in there, we just need to give them the ArcGIS maps, boom, they're good to go. We can do that in a very short period of time, but what does the community expect us to do, I think is the question.
So just to touch on your point, you said it's fair and proper, but at the same time to touch on something JP said, you know, if there's something we can do that affects Twain for next year, that's fair and right for those kids there to not have to wait for something to happen.
And I, I will say at Mid Prairie, they made a decision, what, in April? And they implemented it in August and it was somewhat unpopular and they gave a presentation at the ISB conference.
They also had spent a long time giving the point and making that decision.
Oh, they did.
Huge committee input. It wasn't like it just came up and it was.
No, 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 it wasn't, it was a two-year process of getting to that point. However, they implemented it very quickly.
You've got a, a lot of your suburban districts in Des Moines, literally they'll, right now, they're looking at where the subdivisions are going up and they're making decisions right now, and actually, some of them, I've seen them as late as March, you know what? Your neighborhood's going to her school next year, cause that school's too crowded and that room now has empty seats, cause that subdivision didn't build up. We're just circling your neighborhood and sending it over there, you're getting, I mean, I'm not even stopping by your house to tell you, I'm just gonna send you a letter and say, by the way, now you go over to Godwin Elementary School, cause that's what's easier for us. That's the culture in their district. I've talked to some parents there and some administrators and they say, yeah, we just, we do that in the spring, we just move people around. Obviously not the expectation, I've said to those meetings with me, not the expectation of the parents that were in the meetings the last time around. So I would think if, if we wanna have that conversation, we should invite folks in.
And Paul, to, to your point about the urgency, I think if we consider this as something that's really never been done, if we make a, a decision to do it, I'm certainly okay waiting a year if we have a commitment that we're gonna do some things and we take that year to get input, because that feels pretty urgent to me. I don't think it has to happen for the fall, but if we know we're gonna make some changes, I do think giving the community the time to process and, and give us the input, you know, like to me, if you're talking about 30 years, a year is pretty urgent or a year and a half, right? As opposed to like next fall, especially if we, I mean, we know we're gonna ruffle feathers and so we, you know, there's a way to do that that can be a little, you know, more respectful and, and process oriented and getting input and validating people's experience and feelings that, that I think rushing, we're gonna miss a lot of opportunities to, one, make people mad and then maybe not even do a very, I mean, we wanna do a good job of this too. We wanna make sure that we're thorough and we, cause there are gonna be, you know, those issues, things are gonna happen, we're gonna, if we try new things, we're gonna have new problems and so then we're gonna have to work through those.
There'll be some unintended consequences that we're not prepared for right now, we'll have to work through.
But if we have the commitment, that's what I'm saying, you know, if we have the commitment, to me that makes the, it's like, okay, we're committed to this. And now what does it look like? Cause I think, you know, getting more heads involved is gonna, you know, not too many, but more and different perspective.
I think we really need to know what we're, we're committed to. And I, I think, you know, kinda being the champion of the cause and really getting out there and say, look, this is why we're doing it. We're not just doing it because we want, you know, 427 kids at every school. That's not why we changed boundaries. And here's real tangible reasons and all of our kids will benefit from doing these things. Like, it's gotta be results-based and show people that there's a positive and, and I think that's fair to even to Paul's point, if there's something we could do for next fall, if you show a positive impact to whoever's involved with that decision, then you're more likely to get by in. And we all know, we're not gonna please everybody, but we can at the very least say, this is what we're going to do and this is why we're doing it and it's for the right reasons and we're looking for results to get out of it and here's what we're doing. And you said that earlier, right? We're gonna do it. Sorry about the comfort zone.
Well, and I think that's, that's our job as board members too, I think, and community leaders to have this. You know, Brian Kersley ran him in the hospital the other day and he, you know, his kids went to Schumacher, very homogenous school, and now they're southeast. And he's like, and he was just like, oh man, the difference in my kid's friend group is really exciting, like it's, it's, that's really cool. And it's like, well, yeah, and once you have that experience, I think people, but right now, I think the people in their comfort zone, they're afraid. And they're afraid because they hear all the bad things and they don't understand, you know, it's like, they don't know what's on the other side. And once you see that, there is a little eye-opening of, you know, diversity is a real, like a really good thing. I'm just saying that because it's politically correct. It's like, you know, we, you know, as someone who grew up in a not at all diverse place, it's really exciting when your kid gets exposed to kinds of things I could never expose them to because I don't have the experience or the culture. And I think when people see it, but the hard part is when you see it in a 75% school as opposed to 50, that's, that's different, right? You're now, now you're talking about trauma and poverty and things that are, you know, obstacles that are so deep that you're gonna have a hard, a different educational experience. And so we do have a goal because it's in our plan to get everybody to within whatever, what is it, 15% or?
13%.
So we, we have a plan, we have a goal and now we're just, and we did it, right? It happened, I mean, that was our election, right? Was to do this at the high school level and we've done it. And so now I think it's like, okay, we're just gonna follow what the previous board had decided and continue to move down this path and do it at the elementary level, which we all knew, everybody knew. The previous board knew that was gonna be the hardest, hardest.
And I think, I guess what my point about the stuff that we can change now, like, we have some opportunities, even if what we change changes with the bigger picture. You know, when Longfellow opens up next year, it's gonna be a totally different school. You know, their population for that one year is gonna be what it is and that's gonna change for 2019 because Hoover kids will get, new Hoover kids will get pulled into new Hoover. But, you know, there may be some chances in there where we could maybe take some Twain kids and move them in there because there's space and that will help out next year at Twain as well.
Yeah, I think those kind of, those micro movements.
But you know, that stuff has to be, like, if we're gonna do that, we gotta talk about it and get it done.
Yeah.
You know, so there's some options, I think there's, you know, if we look at schools where that may happen, you know, future, this is not right now, but next year, you know, if you're looking at Mann and maybe keeping some of the kids at Mann that we have scheduled to go to Lincoln because their homes may not be around much longer, you know, that type of thing, there's stuff that we gotta look at.
That's a good point. That's really good.
And I think if we could think of things in terms of what we're already doing, like, for example, Longfellow's already gonna move into where there's a year-round in 2018, so, or 2018, okay, so 2018, so like, maybe that's the time to make a change. I mean, instead of making the teachers move everything twice.
Right. But what I'm saying is like, we may make that change and then if we make an even bigger change overall, that may get a.
Well, I would say perhaps we should look at it in a longer spectrum and say, well, it makes sense, you know, or, or, you know, like, I'm just gonna throw this out because it's on the bond. Borlaug is a, is a school that's on the bond, it's, it's more towards the end, but if we wanted to change something that would send more kids to Borlaug, we could build that into our facilities planning before we get to Borlaug.
Sure.
We could say, this is our plan.
We could accelerate the Borlaug stuff so that if you wanted to do some kinda attendance zone changes with Kirkwood, that you could do it sooner.
Or we would just like make it all fit with what's already happening anyway.
Yep.
You know?
If there's any silver lining to the whole process, I can tell you that the 10-11 discussion was the worst one, just because they hadn't had the discussion in forever.
It was painful.
Well, that's an understatement. I'll take painful as a good adjective though. That was bad.
Yes, it was.
15-16 wasn't as bad.
In certain areas.
I think we have 2014.
I'm going, or 13-14, sorry, yeah. 13-14 wasn't as bad. There wasn't as much caustic dueling microphone yelling at each other, neighborhood kind of stuff in 13-14 as there was in 10-11. 15-16, I think the discussions were deeper and, and, but again, I, I think it was a richer conversation. So I think the community is maturing in their conversation about attendance areas. It's, it's never gonna be easy, cause it's always good for me to fix your problem, that's great, that's one. If my problem, I don't want it fixed, but at least I think each time we do it, our community gets better at doing it, which I think is a silver lining.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I think it's an opportunity.
So like, I guess maybe to touch on my point maybe one more time, if, if we have another work session on this in March, right, is what we're saying?
Yeah, I think that.
I think there's actually.
I think we're talking about it in February.
Yeah, it's February.
We've got.
I think it's past February.
I, I hear you.
Yeah, so we have February and March, right? So that's two more chances before that April timeline, we need it roughly. So like if, if board members or whoever wanted to come up with ideas and can we like present those, you know, as a, here's something we wanna talk about at the next work session?
Absolutely, and if you give, well, I don't wanna try to step on Adam's weekend time too much, but I mean, if you give us a week, if you say, hey, I'm thinking what if this line, just like we do with Penn, what if I drew this line up here? Adam and I and Amy, team, we will sit down tomorrow in a couple hours, we'll knock that off, we'll cringe the data for you. By the way, it's Weber, not Wickham, that was my mistake on the thing out there. The number 24 should've gone down and the line above it should've been Weber. I found it already. But, you know, we can do that for you. That one was because I was doing it on Sunday afternoon, but I mean, if you give us a little bit more time, we can get that to you in a pretty quick turnaround. So if you've got some ideas and you wanna share them with us, we can get into the mapping software, we can give you some feedback pretty quickly.
I'm wondering if our principals could come back with their ideas of, you guys have the students, you know your neighborhoods, you know your families, could, could you guys come back to us and say, you know, I think this concept, whatever, if it's comparing or maybe it's, no, I think a boundary change is better in my neighborhood or maybe, no, we think, maybe magnets make sense? Or all three, in order, preference? Would that be something?
We can definitely get a survey out to them, get some feedback.
Well, I, not, not necessarily a survey, but I would like them to say from their educational experience with their population and their families, what is gonna have most educational impact?
Sorry, and what I meant was get a Google Doc out to them so they've got the ability to fill that in, cause obviously we've got five of them here, we've got 15 of them that aren't, so get some, we'll need some time with them to explain what we're asking them to do. And we can get some kinda Google Doc out that they can fill in, cause part of it is they think about their neighborhood, but okay, so I'm thinking I should peel this piece off, cause if I peel this piece off, well, where does that go? You know, Jeremy and I've had that conversation as we're looking at it, we're saying, okay, what do we do with that? Where does it go? So there's a lot of dominos with it, so we'd wanna be, them to be able to see, okay, what are my neighbors suggesting and what does that, what effect does that have on me?
But, you know, for example, Jeremy might say, you know, I, I think that Twain, a good solution is appearing. Or he might say, no, that's not gonna work, I think we need boundary changes here. Cause it would be helpful for me if I heard from the principals what would really work in your areas. I don't think that there's a one-size solution, one-size fits all solution. I'd, I'd like to see us try a menu of things.
I would like to say, I could be real excited about doing that process with the thought that something's really going to happen. Because I've been thinking, many of us have been at the same table since 2011 and I just felt like, oh, we're just banging our head against the wall. That sounds kind of negative, but this is going to take bold, courageous decision-making. And what I heard at the table tonight is different than what I've ever heard before. It's pretty encouraging.
I, I, that is my sense is that we have, I mean, I think through the campaign, you know, four of us that were running, well, Paul, you too, cause you were down there at Farm's Market all the time, you too, Phil. And so even, it just feels like there's a, I, I haven't heard any dissension yet, like not even, and I know when we start getting really angry email, like, we're gonna have to stand up and, and be courageous in the face of that, but so far, so good. It feels that the.
It's the strength of conviction though, and I think you've expressed it, everyone's expressed it well, and I think that's sort of speaking to what, we need the strength of conviction to, why are we doing this? What's the value? Why do we believe in this? And then go and do, share the message and go and do. I am, I mean, I love the idea of collecting inputs and ideas. I also wanna pay attention to what you were saying too, Paul, about are there some things that we can do really short-term, even for next fall that are small, I mean, I, so back to the conversation getting very tactical and I'm also watching the clocks, I think we're supposed to be done at 10, aren't we?
Oh, wow. I didn't even notice it was 10.
Anyway.
I get all wrapped up in the conversation.
The 27th work session, is one of the 13th, that might be too soon or not? If we have, you said if you had a week, you know, to, for Adam to spend some maps and ideas, if we as board members have short-term ideas or others have short-term ideas, we should get them in and try to start addressing them.
Well, maybe you just add it like we did when we were doing GeoBot talking, you just put it on every work session and if it was, you talked about it, you didn't have it, you didn't talk about it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Just modify it so it's in there and then there's always a, a parking lot opportunity for us.
And I think here, I would love to hear from the principals, I mean, you guys know better than anybody just. And I would say, what are your ideas irrespective of any political word, just logistically, tactically, what works? And then, cause we, I think we have to start with a big, throw a lot of things out there to see what's gonna stick. throw a lot of things out there to see what's going to stick.
One thing I'd throw out is, we have a lot of conversations and around this table, you've all referenced neighborhoods a lot, the neighborhoods and talking to neighbors. Yet, you want to change it. So, we can't, we can't embrace both those ideas at the same time. You can't say we're having neighborhood schools and love our neighborhood schools but then want to change how that looks. So, we had, I mean, that's just, that's just an observation from me over here and listening to the conversation. But we can't, those, those probably don't jive terribly well when you want to then change where students are at, so.
Well, they call, I say it all the time at this table when that's brought up, neighborhood schools is how you define it to me. So, what school my neighborhood goes to, that's my neighborhood school. There's also people that'll say, "Whatever school's closest to my neighborhood is my neighborhood school." So, that's how we define it. And I always will say, my definition of a neighborhood school, for me personally, is whatever school my neighborhood goes to.
I would go further and say wherever your children attend school, that can become your community and take out that word neighborhood.
That's right.
And focus on who, who's the people you're doing life with. That's your community.
I like, that's, yes, I love that perspective there. Because there are little communities and it is what you make it and what you contribute. And we, I think the truth is, we're going to.
Which really works with the name of our district.
The big C, right? Because we're probably going to change some neighborhoods. We're going to mix some, I mean, I think it's going to be hard to make a significant impact if we don't redefine what our neighborhoods are. And some of that happens anyway. I mean, what's a neighborhood in North Liberty? If something's only been, you know, is it just a development or is it? I mean, nobody's been there or very few people in the whole town have been there for 20 years.
The other thing, I just, I want to say, we're getting close on time. I want to say, we're really kind of focusing in on high FRL schools. But, you know, we can focus on the other end too.
I mean, I, I guess, I'm thinking of that already because you've heard me say it a lot. But in 2019, Leimie's going to go from a double-digit school to a single-digit school unless we keep kids from a certain area at that school.
So, maybe we hear from our other principals, you know, and hear from them. What do you think at Schumacher? What?
Well, I'd like to speak for Lincoln. I was just kind of waiting because you've been talking about the high. But for the past two years, my staff has been very excited. We've been learning, so excited to look at 1920 because in our neighborhood contiguous boundaries, our FRL is expected to rise dramatically, ELL. We have been learning. We're excited for it. And to hear that possibly now we might not get, you know, some of the population we're expecting is kind of sad. And I'm kind of sitting here going, I'm, you know, we, we're excited. We're jazzed. We, you know, it's a new challenge. It's, it's what we go into teaching for. So, I would be sad to see if, you know, things like that would change. You know, staff, we adapt to whoever, but we want to have time to prepare. So, while if it's two months, six months or a year and a half, that's great. But just so that, because there's opportunities afforded to schools with higher FRLs than what we get for learning opportunities, especially resources where we've had to be, you know, we don't have as access to as many resources and things, which is fine. Because I firmly believe resources need to go where they're most needed. But that would be a big shift in the, in the community for a lot of the schools. I just want to say that. We're excited for, you know, the changes that we were looking forward to in 1920.
And, you know, you saying that, because I was meeting before Bailey and she said when she was at Wickham, that's all she wanted, was like more diversity. And so, I don't know if it's true, but my sense is that for the most part, staff gets pretty excited about that. The pushback's usually from parents who have a different idea of what that means and they say things that are.
Sometimes it's a fear of the unknown. But I think it's all in how you approach it. If your staff is confident and they, they trust in what they've been learning and have the support to implement, that fear, you know, can be unfounded.
Yeah.
I guess just to counter your point somewhat, is, I know you're excited. If the educational outcome is better that they stay at Mann, then you should be excited for that too as well.
Yeah, I, yes.
Maybe there's some other population we can.
Julie doesn't want to let him go. She wants to keep him on.
That's good too. I understand that.
And I, well, and the truth is, if we are impacting the high FRL, I mean, that is going to impact all below. I mean, it, the kids are going to go somewhere. And the goal is to get it within 15 points so that we have these. And the truth is, I mean, at the end of the day, if we're really successful, we might lose some funding because we might have schools that don't qualify for certain things, which, you know, I don't, I mean, I guess that it's.
That's an okay unintended consequence.
What?
I said, that's an okay unintended consequence.
I was going to say, yeah, hey, that's, that's not a bad problem to have if we have this more equitable.
We may not need as many resources.
Because we, we probably, I mean, I think we know we will.
We might not need five reading teachers if a classroom teacher can handle the needs of the group of kids that are there.
I believe that.
Those are big X, but maybe.
Yeah.
I really like the idea of the short term. And we're talking about a lot of different things. But I think at Twain especially, there are some ideas that could be as early as next year that may not impact as many people as the monthly attendance area that we're talking about, so.
Yeah. I think, what'd you guys call them? Somebody said micro-changes or something?
Yeah, like the kind of low-hanging fruit and collecting that. I'm happy to offer.
Yeah. We'll get a doc out. We'll get feedback from all 20 of them and make sure we have that for you.
I would specifically like to hear from administrators' point of view, their thoughts on paired schools as good, bad, indifferent. I've heard from several community members with the idea. And I have heard from a few teachers, although I would say most of those have been specials, like librarians and music teachers and things because they can more target their library or their music group to a certain age of kids. I haven't heard a lot of it from other teachers or from principals. So, just kind of curious to where you guys land on that as a potential thing.
Do you want to do that now or do we want to get feedback?
I think we all want to.
We can include that in the doc. We could specifically ask them to react to that and maybe think about if, if you think it's a positive, who might be a good partner.
Can we have them come back next time if you're willing?
I really appreciate that.
Could you start earlier?
They're all emailing me, "What time do you think this starts?" I sent them my start time. I said, "Maybe 8 o'clock."
Our agenda's a little bit lighter next week.
Yeah, it is.
A lot lighter.
It is. We got a lot of stuff on today.
Last time, last time.
Last time, we were rocking and rolling, yeah. We were rocking and rolling last time.
Well, I really appreciate you all coming. I know it's really, yeah. It's really helpful for us.
And we know you all have jobs to go to tomorrow too, so.
It's not just us. These are. There was a time when we went past 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
All right. Get up at like 5:30.
Motion.
Motion, Jerry.
Second.
There you go. So, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.